Welcome, everybody. This is the Lakeville Library Board of Trustees meeting on Wednesday, October 29th, 2025. We are currently at the library itself, and I will let everyone introduce themselves. I am Patrick Marshall, Chair of the Trustees.
I'm Ruth Gross, trustee.
Jennifer Jones, library director.
Nancy LaFave, trustee.
And we have Lake Camp recording. All right, and we opened the meeting at exactly nine o'clock. Called to order, we did, so we will go with the secretaries report.
July 23rd.
So we have the September 17th, 2025 minutes.
On the July 23rd.
I thought there was spelling errors.
You found a sp- typing error?
Typing error.
With, and the 23rd?
On the 23rd, yes. Under Building and Grounds, manufactured is misspelled, the fourth line down. And farther down the page, reimbursement to Jennifer Jones, air conditioner is two words.
What was the first one again?
Manufactured.
Right here. Oh, yeah. Extra letter in there.
Yeah, maybe were. Maybe it was manufactured in English. And on September 17th, under the Director's Report, sadness has.
Librarians?
What?
Librarians?
No, the word sadness.
Oh, yeah, yeah. To these.
Yeah.
Well, I misspelled librarians, too. I left out an R.
Where's that?
That's right, the next, the same line, only to the left.
On the July 23rd, I think Jennifer Jewell's last name has two L's.
Two L's on Jewell.
Yeah, I think so.
And it, this name is spelled in other places. Under, no, I did Jennifer on that one.
It's with the refrigerator.
Yeah, her last name had, just has two L's. W E W E. I'm pretty sure. Oh, August is Director's Report on July 23rd, August needs an S.
Not two U's?
Not two. We know what you're talking about. Ready for motion?
I will take a motion whenever people are ready, yeah.
Motion.
I move that we accept both minutes, July 23rd and September 17th, as corrected.
Say corrupted?
A correct, either one.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Is there, excuse me, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the minutes for September 17th and July 23rd as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Let's vote, all opposed? Who we have?
Can I still use a corrected one?
I'm gonna post it ASAP.
Posting minutes, that's an idea.
All right, financial report and.
There's no gifts to report this month. I know, I know. But we're doing pretty well, I think, budget-wise. The last water bill was small, but I'm anticipating after they did some irrigation prior to the festival that it might go up for the next one. I'm not sure how much, but it has been relatively.
212%?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's cheaper than last year. So we're doing well.
It's all relative.
We need a will, we need a will.
I know, we have an update coming.
We have an update.
So, yeah.
Don't get too excited.
Budget-wise, not much to look at. I have a feeling, based on the sales membership meeting, that our dues are going to increase, so we're gonna need to look at that line for the next budget round.
That's at sales?
Yeah, the sales, network assessment.
Would be before June 30th?
Oh, yeah, so Lori's working on it, so we'll know, but I can tell.
This fiscal year, though?
Well, this fiscal year is offset, next fiscal year.
2027?
2027, FY27.
And how much of this is sales dues?
Um, the most of it is the sales dues, like 16, I think it was 15 or 16 this year.
Okay.
So more than 90% of it is sales.
Yeah. So it's always a big number that goes up.
There's a big support, too, in terms of everything.
Oh, definitely.
I mean, I think we gave you last month the value of service, and you get a lot for the money we put in. So it's definitely worth it. And then we should, hopefully, we'll either be in the November Mass Board of Library Commissioners meeting about state aid or the December one, because I got it in, I'm just not sure which one we'll find out how much we're getting this year.
Are they grit?
The, what do they call it? The municipal equalization grant and library incentive grant.
Yeah, state aid.
State aid. And that's it for that.
All right. Any questions on the finance report? Hearing none, we'll let Jennifer take over and do the Director's Report.
All right, I'll stick to the highlights. I did send out a request to get information about newspaper subscriptions through WT Cox, after Patrick had mentioned it, and it would be a savings if we drop the Taunton Daily Gazette, which I'm a little bit miffed, because we're still having issues getting it correctly. It's coming in, like, at least a week late, so.
It's a weekly now? It is a weekly?
It's a daily.
Daily?
It's daily, and we're getting, like, Thursdays, last Thursday's paper, like, Wednesday. So it's been very late all the time, because it comes through the mail, and the mail's having their own issues, so.
Be easier to pick it up at the.
It'd be faster to send it to Ohio than to send it from town to town.
Which is funny, because the Taunton Daily Gazette is also owned by Gannett, who owns the Standard Times. We get the Standard Times delivered, but we don't get the Taunton Daily Gazette delivered by a delivery person, it's delivered through the mail.
I will say, if you do go with the Herald, you're gonna run into the same thing, because the Herald, unless it's changed, was not, they do not do delivery, they only do it by mail.
Yeah.
And at Born, where I worked, we ran into the problem where the Herald would be a week late, or one day you'd suddenly get, like, five papers all catching up.
Yeah, that's what's happening now.
It was pretty bad.
Because we had the request for the Herald specifically, that's why I'm looking into it and thinking about it, so I'd like to modify the proposal to drop the Taunton Daily Gazette and go with the Herald, the Globe, and the Standard Times, which I don't like dropping the Daily Gazette, because it's more local news to this area, but I don't like that it's coming so infrequently and.
I wonder if you called them and said, this is our own.
Well, they just, they don't have.
They don't have that.
They don't have deliver, delivery, so you have to get in the mail.
And they credited our account for a little bit, but.
So anybody who gets it on their home gets it the same way.
Yeah, I would be guessing, but I don't.
So everybody gets it by mail, unless you live in Taunton, maybe?
Yeah.
Do they have newspaper people?
I'm not sure, I feel like it's so close, though, why wouldn't we have a newspaper person, but, yeah, that's been the issue, so I'd like to start that. I think it's gonna be around 1,700 if I drop the Boston. And that, looking at what we're paying now for the Standard Times and the Globe, it would be significant savings for both of those, because WT Cox had a much better price for both of them, and I would end up paying, because of the paper statement fee with the Standard Times, it would be over $1,000 for a year of the Standard Times. It's getting very expensive, so I think going with WT Cox is a good option, so I'll initiate that for the start of the new year, so I can call up and cancel the other ones.
What would the Taunton Gazette be for an online subscription?
I'd have to look, but with our current subscription, we do get print and digital.
Yeah.
And it is $45 a month now, so it was about 540 per year.
Yeah.
But there's no, there's no good way for me to share a digital subscription now.
Well, I thought if somebody came in, you could set them in front of a computer.
We could use a tablet, maybe, load it up with the link and then. But it's, I don't know that people are gonna wanna read it that way either.
We'll find out, once it's gone, whether people.
Yeah.
Did use it and then read.
Then we'll have to read it back.
Yeah.
So for Youth Services, we started Fall Story Hours in September, and she's had good attendance at all of them, and she's continued this Thursday afternoon storytime Teresa has. For the pre-K age, it's had a small attendance, but she's had a good group that's been really attentive to the books and interested in talking about them, so she wants to keep it going. Playing with Purpose had a five-week run with steady attendance, and she's starting Music Time, and that will run through November. So we unfortunately scheduled Builder Noon at the same time as the Assawamson Elementary School Open House and the Freetown Elementary School Open House, so that kind of reduced attendance, but Teresa was at the Assawamson Open House, and she had a good number of card registrations, I think she wrote 13 in her report, which is included if you wanted to read through it. She cleared out some stuff with Craftapalooza, all the crafting kits she had accumulated, some of the usual programs are starting up again, like Bookworms and Steam Afternoons, and Teresa hosted the first Youth Services Sales Meeting last month, and she had a good attendance, there were 15 people between Zoom and being in person, and next time they're gonna meet in January in Swansea, and she's also on, she also started the Teen Services Group, too, because there was interest in having a separate Teen Services Group, so you volunteer once and you are it. So she's, she's been doing that to help out with the sales, the request to have more regular meetings for Youth Services and Teen Services. For adults, we had a really cute felted owl craft from Pop-Up Art School, we had 13 out of 15 people show up, so that was good. I have photos, if anyone wants to see the owl crafts, but they were really cute. Colleen Sutcliffe, who is a local resident, shared her experiences with menopause and the role of sugar in menopause symptoms, she's a wellness coach and a personal trainer who runs women's circles around the area, and she wants to return in winter or spring, so I'm working on a date with her, to talk about the benefits of lifting heavy for women. And then Cindy's Genealogy Club had two meetings, September 20th, and we hosted the Mass Society of Genealogists with the Genealogy Club on October 18th. There was over 20 people at that meeting, which they usually, I don't think they get a ton of people at their, their meetings in Somerset, and they were really well-attended, and Cindy and I offered the Genealogy Club a Saturday in December for a holiday gathering, just to keep the momentum going, because it seems to be a good fit for everybody who's coming, they've made some great connections, so I said, let's think about a whole, see if they want a holiday party.
Bring your ancestors.
Yeah.
I just had to, sorry.
But they, they seem to be really enjoying it, it's really taken off, so I think Cindy's having a good time, like, you know, flexing her expertise in genealogy. And then I started the nonfiction discussion group finally, and we read The Heat Will Kill You First and Nexus, which was about AI, kinda terrifying. The next title is Murder the Truth, which I seem to be just going right for all those topics. But this one, the one coming up, deals with the First Amendment and journalism. We hosted Howard Fishman, and he had a low turnout, I think it was a difficult day, it was a Monday evening, and so he was really gracious about it and talked with 45 minutes for the small group. There's a host of upcoming events, including Sarah Martin, who is the Friends, President Maria Martin's daughter, she's a musician, so she'll be bringing some music and coloring book for children, so it's a children's event coming up in November, and then a few other things, including a gallery reception with Elsie Goldstein and the Red Cross Blood Drive. Buildings and Grounds, well, we're still waiting for the plumber to come fix the outside leak and look at the water heater and the staff bathroom ceiling, so he has not yet returned for those things. We're still seeing yellow jackets, or we were, in the, in the gallery and in that area, the space outside where they're getting in, so hopefully, now the cold weather is here and we'll stop seeing activity, and they did treat it on Thursday, and said if we see more activity, to let them know, so the treatments, the follow-up treatments have been included with the price they charged us originally, so hopefully, this is the last one, it's been treated three times now, so.
Wow, it's taken a lot to get rid of. Very determined, those guys.
A lot of people have had problems with the yellow jacket.
Yeah, I think it's been a bad year for them.
I've seen them around my house, too.
So Earth and Water hasn't removed the pumps yet, that I could see, they were on the other day, so I'll make sure if they're not done within the next week that I call them. Near Refriger is in and working well, it's great, we paid the invoice, and then I'm still waiting for Green River to figure out how we can get the Listen system to work for the gallery. I'm still waiting for, I had a message out to Bob McNally, I think we're gonna have to figure out some way to make it talk to the network equipment in the server room. And then the boiler will be serviced next month, and we'll probably need a return visit from advance for the seasonal maintenance. So on Wednesday, Nancy and I are attending the Mass Library Systems Annual Meeting in Devens, I believe you signed up for that, right?
Yes, right away, I did.
And then we, I have registered for the PLA Conference in Minneapolis in April of 2026, so I'll get you those dates, so you'll know when I'll be out of the building, and then we will be closed for November 11th for Veterans Day, as well as Wednesday, November 26th, and Thursday, November 27th, for the Thanksgiving holiday, the holidays are upon us now, and then we have our staff meeting Wednesday, November 19th at 4:15. We're gonna talk about circulation updates, as well as the plan for the 250th anniversary next year. I have an email from a gentleman that I included, I think I included it in the packet, but he is interested in doing some programming around the 250th, so we will talk about that, and if you have any suggestions about 250th ideas, let me know, I know we're all kind of in the boat of planning, yeah. So the Friends met on October 6th, they are planning for their open house on Saturday, December 6th, and in the gallery, Life in Colors by Elsie Goldstein will go up at the beginning of next month. The exhibit after that will be Deanne Joy with quilts, was it patriotic hard?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, she's not having a reception, which is kinda sad, because I think a lot of people would like to know.
You mean Elsie?
No, the next one, Deanne Joy, she's done a collection of quilts commemorating different wars and veterans, but she's moving during the time, so decided she had enough going on, so, but it'll be a good show.
And after that show, towards the end of February and March, we're gonna be hosting some student shows.
Yeah.
We'll have the middle school art exhibit, the high school art exhibit, and the homeschool art exhibit.
Right, together, one after the other.
Yeah.
Nice. All righty. Gallery policy discussion and possible vote.
I haven't made any changes to this since we discussed it the last time. You made whatever changes we had in the meeting, I think.
Do you want to call? Did they have any changes? I didn't write it down.
Maybe some housekeeping type of stuff, but other than that. And my committee's happy with it, so.
I hope they're, it was really well done.
Thank you. Well, and, and they all took a good bit of time to read over it and discuss it and analyze what would be better, so I was happy about that.
They didn't have any changes on the last.
Yeah.
Only question I have is, is there, I thought in reading in this, it was the application itself, should that be a part of the?
Um, we update the application pretty often, I've never made it.
Part of it.
Part of a policy, it's in a separate place on the website.
I can send you the application. Have you got the new one? Maybe. You might need to send it to me, so I can send it out, or you could just send it down with me.
Okay, I can send it out. We have three different applications, anyway, we have the regular application, we have a collection application, so like when Nancy does a show from the Historical Commission that goes in as a collection, and we also have the high school, we jury the high school kids, so we have their application.
Who's on the committee now?
Joanne, Jennifer, me, Jenny Mulley, and a man named Dennis LaFoy, who actually lives in Middleboro, so he's a, an associate member, I guess.
LaFoy, LA?
No, L A V O I E. But he.
LaFoy.
Yeah, he is an artist himself, and he's very passionate about what we do and, and helpful, so.
And if people are ready to vote on the policy, I will take a motion.
You?
I wrote it, so I feel better if you.
Okay, so I would move to approve the Great Ponds Gallery Policy Revised on 9/25.
Second?
Second, second, all right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Extentia? All righty.
Yay. I did read your policy.
Emergency procedures.
Yeah, it's not really policy, it's more just, um, just stuff for staff to think about in the event of an emergency and what we plan to do, so I know we had mentioned before wanting to have a fire drill at some point, so some of the things are laid out.
Come to the library and have a fire drill.
When, when such an emergency would occur, um, so a lot of it I took from a document that Susan Pizzolato had made for Mattafoiset, so I kinda borrowed a lot of that language and tried to update it, where I know there was some typos and some errors, but we're just looking at who to contact, what to do, who should be in charge of releasing people, when there's an evacuation, things like that. The one question I did have is under Power Failure on page four. The rule thing was that power failure means everybody should leave the building.
Except the staff who are inspecting?
Yes, except the staff. But I don't know if we wanna keep that as a rule, because I know different libraries have different procedures.
And what page are we on?
We're on page four, under Power Failure, first line, yeah.
I know in one of the libraries I was at, I mean, the idea of having everyone leave the building is because it's, especially if it's at night, it's dark, you don't want somebody falling, but most of the time around here, it's freezing cold.
Right.
In miserable, I know in their policy, it was, and I don't know how it is here, but everyone had to be out of the stacks, and you pretty much were in the, the middle of the library, if you will, with lead through the windows and whatever, and they could hang there, because the other idea was if power comes back on in 20 minutes.
Yeah.
You know, that, I mean, staff were the ones that went and grabbed a book if they, somebody needed a book or something, but it wasn't.
Yeah.
I don't know, that's what, I don't know how dark it is here or whatnot, but.
Depends on whether it's cloudy or the case.
Well, if people are going outside, then there's the time for them to find their coats and put them on, and wrap the scarf around their child and, and that kind of thing. And if they go outside, I mean, my, I, if I were going outside, I would just leave, so now are we encouraging more traffic when we're trying to get police cars and, or fire trucks in here?
This is just the, and this is just even a power outage, like, where it's out for 10, 15, 20 minutes.
I, I was thinking it was power outage when there's another.
Not.
Problem.
No, that you should leave out of the building.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, if there's any other emergency, but this, this, I think, is really a question of, are we gonna usher people right out of the building as soon as the power's out, or do we?
So when the power goes out, that means all our lights go down, assuming it's evening, and then the emergency lights will come on.
Correct.
So at least you have the red glow of those.
Where are the emergency lights?
I can see one right from here, I think it says exit. Anyplace that has, is close to an exit, there has to have an arrow or something.
They're usually good for.
They're all battery.
Yeah, they're good for like, what, 20 minutes or something?
But they're all over the building, not just in the vestibule or just in the gallery?
No, yeah.
There's a few, there's not a huge amount.
Yes.
Most of them are over doors, so that you can see them.
Yeah.
Because we don't have a lot of interior walls, so you're looking over a large amount of space.
I mean, there could be, you know, this is written, visitors leave immediately, but we can also do the practice of, well, we'll give it a five minute, and then if it's not coming back on right away, let's find out how long it's gonna be out.
Yeah.
And if it's an outage, it can impact the whole area anyway, so.
Right.
Townhouse wouldn't have.
Yeah.
If, if the townhouse didn't have power.
Yeah, theoretically, if the power's out, everything here is out.
Right. So if it's a hole or something.
Yeah, I will say, like I said, the other, this was Foxborough, and theirs was pretty bright, I mean, they, they did it, you had to leave the building if the power was out for fif, I think, I wanna say 15 minutes, I could be wrong, but basically, they knew that the battery lights were only gonna last 20, so you had to be out of the building once the emergency lights were done.
Okay.
But for the first few minutes, it was, okay, just because of the way their building at that time was designed, and the stacks, even on a, on a cloudy day like today, the stacks were really dark, so it was out of the stacks, but again, they were set up that all the tables and chairs are in the middle at the time, so you could just sit in a table and chair.
And wait.
Get mider lights, you know, the one for the forehead.
I mean, that's, that's a pretty good criterion, if you, the length of time that the batteries work.
You have to, yeah, once the battery lights are out.
Five or 10 minutes.
Emergency lights are out, you gotta be out of the building anyways, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so I guess we could maybe add power failure to a public building. I think she was quoting language that, like OSHA or the state or whoever put it out.
Yeah.
So we could say power failure at the library for more than fifteen minutes?
Well, again, it would just depend on how long your, do you know your emergency lights last? I mean, Foxborough was twenty minutes. I think Wareham, it's twenty.
So they recharge them once the power comes?
Once the power comes on, they come on. Yeah, they're just, I mean, they're just meant to get you out of the building, basically.
Do you wanna say fifteen or twenty minutes?
I would say fifteen. That way you have five minutes to get everyone out of the building. I mean, you should be going around the building anyways and seeing who's in and whatnot, but.
Do you have a flashlight in your desk?
Everybody's got a phone.
I think I do have a flashlight.
But everybody's got a phone. That's the thing. The, getting people out of the building is not like it was twenty years ago. And everybody turns on their phone light and.
So it's gonna make it out. It'll be totally dark.
Yeah, but I could invest in some small LED flashlights too.
None of the batteries are always dead.
I know.
Get some of those rechargeable ones that sit in the charger on the wall.
But we did end up closing, what was it, that day in June, that the power went out, we waited a little bit for staff, but everybody else was out of the building.
Well, that's the thing, you know, that it's not just the cold days. It can also be the really hot days.
But it's funny how people don't wanna leave. If they're working on their laptop and they're not plugged in, they don't care.
They have battery support.
But our wifi is also out, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's just kinda funny, but yeah, I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page with that one, cause I'll probably, I did send a packet to Andrew, so he has this procedure, but I'll fix that. If there's anything else you see that you wanna change, or if there's any other typos, and then it comes with the lovely rendering of the library, where I just marked where the exits are.
I, I do have a question. The active shooter says, if necessary, escape to a neighboring home or building. I, I don't know if telling people to go across the street where they don't have any protection is a good idea.
Head for the woods.
Yeah. Maybe go to the tennis club, you know, and I also don't want to lead a shooter to anyone else's.
Right, so you wanna take out neighboring home and just put building?
I, I don't know, out of the sightline of any threatening person. That's.
When people could go across the street and go behind the church.
Yeah, but there's a lot of open space.
Have you had the police chief or anyone look at that?
Not yet.
I mean, I'm not gonna sit, say that I feel confident that I would know. I would, I would defer to an expert on that one.
I think Susan had gone through the Alice training though.
Hmm, no, yeah, she did, I know that.
Yeah, so I think a lot of it came from what she read from there. But yeah, I can, I can have the chief look at it too. I was gonna send it out to actually both Chief Perkins and Chief O'Brien.
Because I mean, my thought kind of with Ruth on that is evacuating to like the historic townhouse, we'll chance our nobodies there, so.
Yeah. Yeah, but you're still walking across the street.
Oh yeah, no, there's that, but you're not getting, it's not like you're getting inside anyway.
Exactly.
That's if you're chased by an alligator.
I mean, hiding behind the building too, that's the thought, just get behind the building when they can't see you. And then if they're approaching, continue making an escape.
Head, head in woods, more cover in woods.
Yeah, that's, that's a frightening thing that we have to even discuss this.
So are we eventually gonna approve this, or?
Yeah, I mean, I, maybe adopt, I guess is a better word, adopt the procedures. Yeah, I can have the chiefs look at it. I can send it to Andrew too for any other changes, and then if we wanna come back and adopt it at the next meeting officially.
November?
Yeah.
Alright. Uh, any other discussion on that? Hearing none, Lake Cam agrees?
Alright, so last month, we had talked about some things that are missing from the agreement, like basically the maintenance concerns. Um, and then you had asked to have the full agreement, so I have put that in your packet to read through. I don't know, because it was the select board as well, whether this is gonna have to be a whole big thing to change. Or if you want to work on a, a new agreement for when they move back in.
Do we have any timeline on that?
Potential, yeah.
And I know they've asked for space with the reuse committee for the town hall fire station, where the fire station is now. But a lot of people want space.
I mean, it makes sense to me that they would be a, a, a very good option for that space, but.
Yeah, I don't, I haven't watched the meetings lately to see what the status is. I know they're going before town meeting with a question to get some funds to do a study. So is it worth kind of working with the select board to redo the agreement?
Well, I mean, what I saw in the papers, nothing's happening until, and fire station's not opening until twenty twenty-seven sometime, so then you're looking at time to refurbish town hall and that building, so, I mean, I would assume if Lake Cam is looking to get out of their spot there now, they're probably going to come back here to the spot they have already. I would say we could take a look at the agreement and see if there's anything. I can't imagine there'd be a lot of changes.
I think it's just, just the sort of maintenance part of it.
But it would be a who's up, you know, kind of an update. I'm sure the select board would have to weigh in.
Yes.
And when you say maintenance of their office, or?
Just things that, like the door that broke.
Right.
The arm, like, and I thought, you know, as it's our building, you know, sort of we would be the ones who would facilitate the repair through Paul.
Yeah.
Or something, but, um, yeah, I mean.
And they, did they do the?
Yeah, so Jose contacted Paul right away.
Okay, so he went through the right channels?
He went through the right channels, but I'm not sure if, like, should that be something that we're aware of, then we reach out to get it fixed, or is it, you know, who's, who should be contacting facilities to do it, you know, sort of that.
Yeah.
Procedure, I guess.
As long as it's set out in writing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So yeah, that's, that's kind of why I was looking at the whole thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, let's take a look at this between now and the next meeting, and then I would say, Jennifer, if you have something, I don't know, examples of like that, or not, nothing, not necessarily bad, but good or whatever that have come up, that kinda get you what your thoughts are on this, just send them out to us and.
I can send some, like, maybe some language to add to, and maybe where, where to put it in the agreement. Cause I know there's, it talks about security on number thirteen.
Yeah.
So I think probably something added to the general expectation, like if something breaks, who to inform, what needs to happen, you know, who will be responsible for the cost of repairs.
You've also done a great job with updating a lot of the policies, so this was written before policies, library policies themselves were updated, so is there anything grossly out of whack with this?
I don't.
I wouldn't think so, but.
No, cause it talks about, you know, checking with the library director or designated before the meeting reviews. That's fine. You know, it's just, I don't think anything much has changed.
Yeah.
Just that it didn't address any sort of maintenance kind of stuff at all. It just, well. Who fixes it?
When we're young enough then, that it was like, oh, it's a brand new building, nothing's gonna break.
Right.
Ever.
I know. And fourteen years on, the arm gave way. So yeah.
We're all a little more broken than we were then.
Okay.
Okay.
Alrighty, Mobile Beacon.
So, okay. Probably in here somewhere.
Oh, I'm sure.
Um, so Mobile Beacon is offering a lending launch kit for digital inclusion grants. And I put the application, they also had a, an email that went out, and I believe it said twenty-five. You can get twenty-five laptops and they, I believe they include a hotspot with them, so they have a little kit you can put together for people. Um, so this kind of is a, a thought we've had about starting a lending library or library of things. And also, I've heard from Lori at the COA, that they've been doing a lot of technology with the seniors. And she is working on cybersecurity with them, I believe, and they've gone through a program, they've had classes, they've been able to use laptops at the senior center. And some of them expressed an interest at having a laptop to bring home. So she kinda mentioned it to me. I said, well, we can maybe think about that, because we have a way to lend. We could lend the laptops through the library, through their library card, and then they could take them home with the COA. And str- you know, have the COA instruction sheets and be able to use the, the laptop. So that's, that's something that, um, you know, I was looking at this grant program as maybe an option for that. There was also um, an email that came out from the state for a digital inclusion program, which was similar with devices you could get for public use, and it could be in library, or it could be checked out, taken home, offsite, is tablets, desktops, and laptops. But the minimum for that was thirty. But recently, they did put out an email that you could partner with other libraries, like if thirty is too much for us, we can maybe partner. Both of the grants are due like at the end of the week, so. Applications are due quickly.
Well, you've got nothing else to do.
So, um, I wanted to bring it to hear thoughts. Are you, are there any concerns?
My only concern really would be whether the people getting the laptops would know how to use them. Being a less than par laptop user myself, but if they're having classes at the senior center.
And I think that's a way to nicely sort of bring it together, is if they, if we had a way to lend laptops. She doesn't have necessarily a great method for lending laptops.
Right.
But if, if we could partner with her to do that, or partner with, you know, we could partner with Wareham to maybe.
How many do you think we would need?
That's a good question. Like, the thirty made me hesitate, because it seems like so much. And in terms of what we already have for public computers, we have nine.
Yeah.
So if we were gonna do some sort of combination where we had public computers, which do need updating, I found out that we can't, we can't bump up to the envisioned Ware cloud because they're too old. So I have to replace them soon to be able to use the stuff we're paying for. Um, and then, you know, if we were to replace those desktops or laptops, because we've been talking about um, in children's maybe going to laptops to use in-house. And maybe some for adults too, so not having as many desktops, maybe having a combo of say, three desktops and six laptops. So that's only nine computers out of thirty.
Yeah.
So I think ten, but if we decide to maybe lend out laptops, maybe get five laptops to lend out, so maybe up to fifteen, so half of what the minimum is.
Yeah.
I think is doable for us.
Yeah. And if we did pair with Wareham, would fifteen be enough for you?
Well, that's the minimum.
The thirty's the minimum.
So you can ask, maximum was like five hundred or something like that?
Oh gosh.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, let's get that.
So, yeah.
So matching money with this, right?
No, it's just equipment.
So with the, the state program, it's a sort of a five-year commitment to keep the devices, one-year commitment for monitoring the usage and reporting.
It's, sounds good. I mean, it sounds to me like something we are going to do, whether we do it right now or whether we wait and do it at another time.
The way to get the equipment covered.
Yeah, this is, this is something that is just makes sense, that it's the next level.
Yeah.
My opinion.
So all of these computers that we would get would be for the public, not for the office or anything?
Correct.
Yeah, they have to be used for.
Would any of them be in YA or teens, or would they be in children's?
So if we go the route of having desktops and laptops, and I think that would be allowed with the, the state grant, because it's in-house and outside use. The three, three desktops, I would still keep one of the desktops in the alcove here, and then two in the adult section. But the other six laptops could go anywhere. It could be adults, teens, or children using them. Or if we add a, say we add multiple laptops and we get up to the, the fifteen number, that's six plus.
Plus two.
Yeah.
Another six, so possibly twelve laptops to use for anywhere and check out, and maybe take home.
I mean, the focus is for career, medical, and technology learning, basically. So those are the three primary areas that the state is focusing, and you have to use the equipment for all three. I mean, it's what libraries do anyways, but that's not an issue.
That's sort of.
That's, that's the focus, though.
Well, it seems like there may be families who have one desktop computer, which is fine when they've got young kids. But once they've got two kids in high school, and then the needs of the parents, it'd be nice to have that option.
Yeah, what happens if equipment gets damaged?
So with the, the Mobile Beacon, I didn't see on their website immediately, but I'd have to read some of their FAQs to see if they replace the equipment, if it's damaged or lost. But I believe I read on the grant program from the state that if they, we contact them if anything's lost or damaged, and they will work on some sort of replacement to, to help with that.
Do the schools give the students laptops now?
I believe they do get laptops at the high schools. Yeah, I'm not sure about the other schools.
Yeah, well, anyway, it's nice to have a backup.
Speaking of the schools, I actually have set up a meeting with Dr. Starkey, with Teresa and I, um, later this, this coming month in November, to talk about some things, like how we can support the curriculum and stuff, so I'm, you know, trying to figure out how, how we can. So I'm, you know, trying to figure out how, how we can, you know, get into the schools to talk to them and sort of promote our resources and things like that, so. Hopefully that'll, that'll provide some insight as to who I can ask, who does get a laptop in the schools.
Has, is this the first time this grant's been done?
Um, I'm not sure. I know that the money for the state grant is coming from the treasury, the federal, it's federal money. Some sort of grant program that they do. So it's.
Well, it's gonna last.
And then this one is a company, Mobile Beacon is a, a company that works a lot with, um, libraries for hotspots. But I believe they're a for-profit company. But there's been a lot of focus lately on the digital divide, I think, especially, you know, looking at the way things are moving with AI. I think there's a lot of focus on getting people ready and building up their technology skills.
Well, I think a lot of people are using AI and not realizing it to, at this point.
So do we need a motion for you to proceed?
Um.
I think so.
Just a blessing, I guess. You're blessed. Go forth with the blessing of working with Wareham if possible or seeking out ways to, yeah, cause we do have to replace those computers. Next month, I'll probably bring in, um, I'll try to get a quote from them to replace the circulation computers cause those need to be replaced pretty quickly. So, and I know it's like a six-month wait for computers to fail, so the sooner it gets in, the better. But, yeah, we have to replace all, I replaced the staff ones, now it's everybody else that's gotta get replaced at this point.
Yeah.
Because of the longevity of the computers?
Mm-hmm. It hasn't been done, I think a lot of them are around twenty nineteen or twenty twenty.
Yeah, I don't think we did much of twenty twenty.
No.
With replacing computers.
We did too much twenty twenty period.
No.
We stayed alive.
All right, teen space redesign.
So I'm still waiting for the updated proposal from Nanny. They gave us something, um, that had a couple pieces of furniture that we weren't thrilled with, so we went back to a redesign and getting some different shelving options.
This is twin, the teen space.
So right now, they are also voting on their favorite color, so.
How many, how many individuals do we have involved in this voting?
Um, so far, I think she's had six votes or maybe a little bit more than six votes. I think there might be more now, but she's had a few, a few votes so far. And I think they're split fifty-fifty on which color, she's only given them two options.
What are the options? Blue is one.
It's blue and blue. One's a little more turquoise-y and one's a little more straight blue.
They'll figure it out.
So, yeah, that's, I don't have the updated proposal from Demco yet. But once I get that, I'll, I'll share it, hopefully the next meeting he'll have it. He, I gave him some specs and some pictures of what we were thinking of, where we were gonna put it and what the kind of type of shelving we wanted, um, in those two nooks. So we'll see how much it's gonna end up being, but I think the original quote with some of the furniture we didn't want was around fourteen thousand.
Roof project.
There was, um, went out to bid, bids were due earlier this month. I think maybe October tenth, I think it's sticking out in my mind. Um, there were a couple site visits with the roofers, so Paul showed them what, what kind of, um, materials we have and, and what it looks like currently. So then, um, there were bids put in. I'm not sure how many bids were, were, um, submitted, but they were going to read them, I think, last week and I haven't heard anything yet as to if they've made a decision yet. So more to come on that, but I just wanted to let you know it's moving forward.
It is moving forward, we like that.
There were, there were bids, there were people visiting.
All right.
And so Emily and Paul have been working on that. Um, Emily at the town hall and Paul the facilities manager.
Well, now. I guess we'll go to the well update.
Well.
Working on segue.
Let Ruth hit that one, okay. So I sent Andrew a message early in the month saying I wanted to be able to give an update. Um, so as of October fourteenth, he said, we're finalizing a scope for the work and we hope to have it finalized and out to bid in the next couple of weeks. I'll check with the project team to get a firmer timeline on everything. And then, um, two days ago, we are reviewing and scope and project funding. It may not be before your meeting, but we are hoping to meet internally to gain plan out those details. So it's, it, it's at least in people's minds.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right. I don't have any segue for Snow Person, so which is next.
We skipped the.
What?
Was this, um, Mr. Mason's letter? Oh, that's at the end.
Oh, yeah, I, I just threw that in when we talked about the ideas for two hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
So the Snow Person, are we going to be a drop-off or pickup or no?
Apparently we're a drop-off, yes.
Drop-off?
I have a little box out there now, so people can pop it in.
Is it snowproof?
Yes.
What if they melt?
Actually, so it is snowproof.
So they can melt in, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, get on the floor, good.
So, yeah, um, and I believe they're gonna be the last day of, um, drop-off, they'll be here to pick them up. Which I think is the Saturday, the twenty-ninth or something.
And they're planning on doing all of them in, across the street, not on our grounds, or are they going to?
I believe it's gonna be on our grounds again, yeah. Good, I think.
And the same day, there's gonna be the stopped parade.
Yeah.
I know there's another name for it and parade is gonna be stand-stalling.
Something stroll, isn't it?
Yeah, there's a stroll around it.
Yeah. Cute. And she did, she did stop by to, um, she was outside on a day selling.
Yeah, it's a, it's a Saturday, yeah.
And she said she sold quite a few.
She, I was number ninety.
Oh.
Yeah, she was surprised at how many she'd sold so far.
Yeah. It should be a nice event and I think, um, you know, the thirteenth, December thirteenth, when they have the event.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, they're gonna use the stage, I think, and.
And the money raised is going to go to, uh, the animal shelter earmarked for veterinary expenses because when they get a dog that's been abandoned or thrown out of a car or whatever, is you know, no telling what condition they're in, sometimes they need massive grooming if they're one of the smaller breeds.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's an issue.
The memorial update.
So the, um, mobile shelving came in while it was on vacation, of course. But Teresa accepted it and put it together. Um, pretty much it was all assembled, it came crated, so we still have the crates in the, in the other room. And it was, um, two of them were great and one of them had some damage in it. It looked like it was damage upon assembly, not from any shipping. So I did contact Demco, so one of the shelves looks like it's gonna start flaking. So at the very least, I asked if we could get a new shelf, so I have not heard from them yet. Um, Vanessa at Demco did say, contact her if I don't hear from them by Friday. So hopefully we'll, we'll be able to get a replacement shelf. The other two look great. Um, Teresa already has them filled up in the children's room with the parenting section, she's taken down the shelving and we're ready to put the memorial sensory toys on the wall.
And what the fuck.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, um, we've talked about if there's money left over to see if Doris might want to order two more sensory toys that would probably, if, if, depending on how much the plaque ends up costing, we might be able to do that or we'll add some materials. But it's gonna look very cute, so we've got the wall already propped and washed.
Nice.
Now it's just a matter of putting them up.
I wanna check it out before the.
Yeah.
All right, anything else that needs to be brought forward?
Um, the letter I included from the patron who wanted to do the discussions, if anybody has any ideas, just let me know. He mentioned doing a series of programs and I'm not sure it's something we should do alone or maybe the historical commission.
History Commission might be interested in partnering up.
So I told him I would get back to him once I had talked to staff and. At the trustees' meeting.
They're meeting in November, so let's see if it's gonna be before your meeting. Well, it depends on when we're gonna need, right? They're meeting on the nineteenth. I can send out preliminary, just like a interest.
Sure.
I'm gonna have it on the agenda.
I can forward you the email from this gentleman, Tom, is it Tom Mason?
Yeah.
That's really all I have for today.
Uh, next meeting date, if we were to hold with the fourth Wednesday, that's the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. You're closed, so that's not gonna help out much.
That'll be the twenty-sixth, right?
Yeah, so that's not gonna work.
How do you feel about the nineteenth? Do you want us and the staff meeting all in the same day? Oh, I don't.
We've got sales, I've got a sales.
You have a sales board meeting, right?
I mean, unless you wanna go in the evening or, I mean, if you, I, I could do Monday or Tuesday of the, the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth if you want. It'd be Monday better.
Either of those.
Monday would be better.
Monday, the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
I have a sales thing at ten. But you tell Lori I'll be late.
Do you want to meet earlier than nine o'clock?
That's fine. Eight-thirty?
Is, is your meeting just down the street?
So it's a Zoom meeting.
Oh, a Zoom meeting, oh, okay.
Yeah.
So do you wanna meet at eight?
Thirty?
Eight-thirty is a little better.
Really with bus duty, so it's like, or eight-thirty?
Yeah, if you wanna do that or, I mean, it's up to Jennifer as far as if nine works, we can do nine if you want.
I can be here early, eight-thirty, I was here at eight-thirty anyway, so.
Okay, eight-thirty works for me.
Eight-thirty on the twenty-fourth?
On the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
So we're gonna have snacks, we should have snacks.
We should have pie.
We should have pie.
Um, all right, so we will meet on the Monday, the twenty-fourth at eight-thirty, I'm gonna put that in now. Is there anything else that needs to come before us? If not, I will take a motion to adjourn at ten oh four AM.
Still moved.
Is there a second, second? I, I cleared my club aside.
I'm sorry?
I just declared my club aside. We're adjourned.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Thank you.